Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order for March 25, 2024. My name is Carrie Marnock. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Millie Milton? Millie, we just can't hear you.
Here.
Okay. Bill Pierce.
Here.
Amy Pritzke.
Here.
Anthony Zaitin.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bob Federico. Bob may have stepped out for a minute, so that's okay. Ground rules for the meeting: The chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the board will be conducted by roll call. For our public comment by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please note a party of your phone number will be visible to those of you in the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for comments. Tonight, we do have an executive session, so with that, it's the first meeting, it's the first item on our agenda. So what we'll do tonight is we'll vote to move into executive session, and then we'll come back into the general session, the public session, after then to continue to discuss, they continue public hearing for the bylaws. With that, first item on the agenda is executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation regarding pending land use litigation. Gutierrez Company v. Northborough Planning Board, Land Court Number 21, MISC 000380. Due to the chair's determination, the discussion regarding this matter is an open meeting, in an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on litigating position, the litigating position of the board. Based on that, is there a motion to move into executive session? I make a motion to move into executive session. A second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Millie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. So right now, we'll move over to the executive session and then come back to continue the public hearing for zoning bylaws. Thanks so much.
Okay, so we'll just give another minute for Mellie to come back over and Laurie. And I think we're already streaming. And I see Bob is there.
Yeah, well.
Hi Bob. Thanks for waiting.
No problem.
Okay, we're just waiting for Laurie and Mellie. Oh, Laurie's in the audio. Oh, Lori's in the audience. Let's see. Oh, I don't have, um. I'm not a, oh, here's Lori. Okay, she's in. And we just, and there's Millie. Okay, great. All right, Lori should be back in the panelist section here. Okay, um.
Ah, there I am. I can't turn on my video for some reason.
And then, oh, I am a co-host. Okay, strange.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you. Um. Let's see. I don't have my usual features that I'm allowed to do, so I don't know what's going on here, but.
Yeah, they set up the, uh, the meeting a little bit differently, so that's probably why we can't see anyone.
Okay, so the only thing is if it is a public hearing, I just need to, are you able to see if there are attendees raising their hand? Because I won't be able to see.
Yeah, so the way they set up the meeting, it's not like a, a panelist and attendee kind of thing, so.
Okay, everybody's in one spot?
Every, everyone is, they only can view it. They can't, unfortunately, can't come in as a, an attendee.
Okay, can I call?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay. Um. Lori, is that problematic?
Um, this isn't a webinar, right?
This is not a webinar. It's just a meeting. Yeah.
So if anybody wants to join the meeting, then they're gonna be present with the rest of us on the screen.
Okay, that's fine. Then one thing, um, I have a, in terms of the agenda, did we need to open the public hearing for the citizens petition or that already happened? I'm sorry if I.
Nope, that's gonna be on our next meeting agenda on April 2nd.
Okay, all right. Good, great.
So the only thing we have tonight is, um, the continuance of the public hearing on our regular warrant articles.
Okay, great. I'm with you. All right, so now next on our agenda tonight is the continued public hearing for the purpose of seeking public opinion on proposed amendments to the zoning map and the following sections of the Northborough zoning bylaw as listed in tonight's agenda. So for tonight, um, it sounds like, Amy, I wasn't at the last meeting and I know you shared it. Is there any outstanding items that, um, you'd recommend we start with here or has everything been cleared or?
I left it open in case anyone had anything to add. Um, Lori was going to take off the five acres of Harvey from the MBTA, so it sounds like with the email that came out today, Lori, you worked on it and you removed it.
Yeah, so, um, so the warrant that is before the selectmen tonight incorporates all the changes. So the changes that I sent out, I sent out two versions. There was a clean version that I sent last week um, to the town administrator's office, which had all of the changes incorporated as a regular document. So this is the way it should appear in the warrant. And then he also wanted a track changes version. Um, and it's only for those three articles that changed. So those are the only three articles that I submitted. And I submitted, uh, that revised version of the zoning map. So it was just the blow up itself, uh, because the zoning map itself is really difficult to see um, the limits of the parcels. So I redid the, uh, blowups so that it only showed the five acres of Harvey. And I've been working with GIS on a prettier version, um, which is gonna be a handout at town meeting. So that's the version that is going to be before town meeting for the vote. So any other changes, if there are any changes that come out tonight, those changes will not be incorporated on the warrant. Those, uh, will have to be made on the town meeting floor.
Okay, are there any proposed changes from the board this evening on any of these final articles?
I guess the only changes that could happen, and it probably wouldn't even affect the warrant article that went to the selectmen because it's not done yet, is the map. What we had last time was a discussion about, we had sixty-six point four acres. Um, ended up, that's how much we ended up with MBTA and we only need fifty. And I discussed taking off a couple of small lots because in my opinion, I added them at the last minute because we said we were so close to being at fifty acres. We ended up at sixty-six point four. And then there was a discussion on whether seven acres had to be removed because they, um, were wetlands or excluded. But then we found out from the Barrett Company that those acres aren't gonna be excluded. So even taking out the five acres of Harvey, we still are at sixty-one point two acres in nine hundred and eighteen units. So if we wanted, we could take out a little more. Like, one of the ones I brought out was I threw in zero Hudson, which is point three nine acres in, um, downtown neighborhood because it was next to fifty-six Hudson. Like, we could take that off. It was just thrown on at the end to make sure we went above, but now we are above by eleven acres. So.
That parcel is largely undevelopable.
Right.
The Rivers Protection Act, so it doesn't hurt to have it in there because you can't really build on it anyway. So you have to remember that there's a two hundred foot buffer on either side of a perennial river or stream. So the first hundred feet is a no build, um, buffer. The second hundred feet you can build, but there's mitigation. So, um, you know, chances are it would, uh, he was talking about doing like a little playground and a canoe launch and parking. So if I remember correctly, there was no building proposed there anyway. Um, and it is doubtful that they will be able to get a building in um, because of the river that's right there.
Then why would we even leave it on? That was just my thing. Why not just take it off if it doesn't, if it can't be developed anyways? Why not confuse the issue, why confuse the issue and leave it on the map?
What is our goal? So if we're over, what, what did we hope to end up with in the end? Is it, we just wanted slightly over fifty or we were aiming for fifty-five? Like, what was our original target?
So, uh, what you're required to have by law is fifty acres.
Okay.
So, I mean, the bulk of the land that is included is unlikely to be, to result in any units whatsoever. Um, because it's already developed. Um, so that goes for, of course, the, uh, the condo development, uh, townhouses on Hudson. That goes for the, uh, Heritage Village, which is owned by the Housing Authority. Uh, fifty-six Hudson, of course, it just went for approval of, um, a, uh, an addition, a large addition, which is under construction. So there was, wha- what I'm hoping to get is some sort of developable land in the downtown area, so I can leverage that to get grant money for downtown revitalization. So if you remove all of the development potential or the bulk of it, then that is gonna make the likelihood of getting grants smaller and smaller.
Okay, so Amy, you mentioned the point three nine, which doesn't seem like a huge swipe. Was there any other, um?
Well, before it mentioned, how many units do we want on Harvey? With five acres, you get seventy-five. With three acres, you get forty-five. Which is more palatable to the people?
Then we'll have to rerun the analysis again because the analysis was run for ten acres and it was run for five acres. So I had to pay twelve hundred dollars to have that analysis rerun. If we change the, um, acreage again, then we're gonna have to go back and have them rerun the analysis a third time and that's.
If we're just subtracting things that were already analyzed, what are they rerunning? Just adding up new numbers?
Because they have to figure out how much is excluded land. So once again, we have riverfront. So we have, um, we have the same issue with the Rivers Protection Act buffer. So every time you change, change the, uh, amount of land, like the parcel size, then they have to rerun it with their analysis tool.
Isn't that just this, that's just the page, the, uh, Excel spreadsheet? Like, today he went from ten to five acres with Sarah.
No. Because they had rerun the analysis before, so they had provided me with the Excel spreadsheet before, so I just took the numbers from that Excel spreadsheet that had the amount of excluded land and I plugged it into this web, this, this page. Turns out that I had missed one area, so I kept getting an error message. So she fixed that for me. Um, and, uh, so that's what we did today.
I mean, the way they developed this, the towns were supposed to be able to do it without a consultant. I, I have a hard time believing that.
They would make, wanna change if they pay twelve hundred bucks.
Right. I mean, I can go back and try to figure out, I don't know if I can, but how to run it because you're supposed to be able to run it. Every town's supposed to be able to run it. So to take two acres off, it wouldn't, definitely wouldn't blow it, put us below the fifty acres. And we're at nine hundred and eighteen units. It's not gonna put us below seven hundred and fifty.
Well, let's, we need to be realistic here, right? It's not nine hundred and eighteen units. Because you're, you're talking, in order to get to that nine hundred and eighteen units, they're gonna have to wipe out Avalon and rebuild it from scratch. That's not gonna happen.
But that's not even what I'm talking about.
Let's be, but you keep throwing out that nine hundred and eighteen number, okay?
I'm be, I'm being realistic with right now.
Let's be realistic with, let's be realistic with, with not units, right? Let's be realistic with acreage.
So Amy, what area are you looking at when you calculate the nine eighteen? Is that the whole, um?
But that's, that's not even what I was trying to say, but those are the numbers she came up with. What I was trying to say is right now with five acres on Harvey, someone can come in and put in seventy-five units. If we wanted someone to come in and put in forty-five units, then it has to go down two acres to three. That's all I was saying. It doesn't, it's not gonna go below the seven fifty, whether it's nine eighteen, whether it's eight hundred, I'm just, it's nine eighteen right now. I'm not saying that's what they're developing. I was just saying, what is palatable to town hall and to town meeting? I mean, I've thrown out this three acres a couple of times, so I just didn't know that you'd have to pay twelve hundred dollars to run it again.
Sorry.
You know, my question for you is, do you like having dumpster storage in the downtown? If you want to keep dumpster storage in the downtown, then, uh, fine, go ahead and remove the acreage. I personally do not think dumpster storage is the highest and best use for downtown Northborough. So you have to provide them with an incentive to sell the property and go somewhere else. And giving them a tiny number of units, remember, there's already a very large building that would have to be demolished. And then on the MSR portion of the parcel, you can pretty much do nothing but a couple of single-family homes. So if you want something other than dumpster storage, you have to incentivize it. Otherwise, you're just gonna have dumpster storage for the next several years because there's no incentive for them to move.
But forty-five versus seventy-five, I think forty-five in Northborough is a pretty big incentive. We, we only allow what downtown, like six units per acre right now?
Millie, did you have something? It looks like you're, were you trying to say, you're on mute here.
Anyways, um, I mean, I guess I feel like we're trying to, we can go on and on with this, whether it's three acres, three and a half, four. I, does everybody in the board or do people feel that we benefit with staying with the five acres, which is what we have been working with? I know that less has been brought up, but I feel like we're just continuing to try, trying to split this into something that actually probably isn't gonna benefit anything. Where it's almost, I almost feel like sometimes we're not gonna get the, the, um, the goal of the MBTA, but we're also not gonna get the goal of what we're looking for in our downtown. So we're, you know, I'm okay with the five acres. I don't think somebody's gonna put up seventy-five units uh, in the next two years, three years. I do think we do, we need to make something in our, our, um, proposal, palatable for downtown, you know, business movements.
Do you, um, with that said, Millie, are you, um, do you wanna get closer to the fifty or are you good with the sixty-one point two, I guess? Is that where we are now, sixty-one point two? Or regardless of it's a five or something different, what's your view on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I'm okay with more than fifty. I don't wanna go a lot higher, but I, I'm not sure I would think, I'm not sure I feel that cutting another two acres out of our downtown area is, is what I would like to see. I think the argument before has been, you know, it's the schools or the congestion. And I think if we, if it's done well, it can be, it can be done. Otherwise, if you go, I think if you carve it down to fewer acres, then, then it's probably not gonna be appeal to a developer.
Yeah, I guess for me, I, um, I'd like to be closer to the fifty. I don't know the right recipe for that, but I'm not thrilled to, to beat it by, you know, ten, eleven point two more acres. I don't know. I don't know how to work that, I guess. I'm just curious to know board sentiment on, regardless of where the numbers come from, are you okay with where we are numbers-wise? It sounds like, Bill, you're okay with the sixty-one point two.
Yep, it's what we voted on already, so I'm okay with it.
All right, Anthony, is that something? Are you okay with it?
Well, I think, um, I would like it to be less, but at the same time, without even seeing all the maps right now, but I don't know where you could pair off, you know, five, six acres from, whether you just took a chunk out of, you know, one of the existing parcels, which probably wouldn't be meaningful to, to either good or bad to anybody. Because a lot of that, you know, is not gonna be developable. But I do think, you know, a smaller number than seventy-five will be easier to get through town meeting for sure.
Mm-hmm. And Amy, it sounds like you wanna get closer to the fifty.
It's not even the fifty acres. I'm gonna get closer to fifty units downtown. I think seventy-five is a lot of apartments and I do think with the traffic and I just think it's, um, a lot.
Okay, all right, I wonder, um, I, we have two, it's, I think we have two public commenters. I'm not sure. So, um, Henry Squante, um, did you wanna make a public comment? And I apologize for the format tonight to drag you into the panel box here. I don't wanna, is there something you wanted to contribute or you just are in the audience and this is the only way to get in?
It's the only way I could get in, Carrie.
Oh, okay, no problem. I just wanna make sure we, we're forgetting to ask if you, um, had a comment. And I guess, um, Patrick F., same for you. Did you have a comment or just, um, this is the way to join the meeting for you? No, I'm mute. Perhaps just a way to join. All right, well, if you do, if there's anybody who comes in and is surprised to be in the panelist box, uh, again, I apologize for that. We had a different setting tonight. If you do have a question, uh, something to comment, just if you put your hand up, I'm happy to let you share your public comments. Um. Okay, Amy, were there other swipes, I guess? Or, or your point is not really to get closer to fifty. It's the downtown area primarily that is of concern to you.
Yeah, I just thought seventy-five is a, a large unit for downtown, like the school street apartments, those condos. I think I've added them up before. There are like sixty of them. I don't know, seventy-five seems like a lot right there. And they can be, you know, it could be seventy, I, they won't be able to fit them. Could be seventy-five condos, it could be seventy-five, you know, single family, it can be, you know, whatever fits. But I also don't think when everybody says, oh, it's a detriment to the developer. You know, I know I said it before, but I've talked to someone else and they didn't even wanna do close to that amount, so I don't think going to forty-five is a detriment.
Okay.
But I've brought it up enough and if the board doesn't want it, then we could try to go to town meeting with seventy-five.
Okay, and then that would be the max. Seventy-five would be the max they could put up, right?
Yes. Unless they do two on like, like Lori. Unless they do two on like, like Laurie said, they can put a couple over on the other side, like. At MSR, right, if they, they can do like an A and R, they could subdivide, they could do something.
At the last meeting, um, the vote, there was a vote already taken on this, or not taken?
I don't know if we ever voted, we kept waiting for Judy's numbers to come back.
Uh, I believe, I believe you voted last time, last meeting.
I think we did.
I don't remember.
Okay, so. Is there, um. I guess at this point, eh, is there interest in modifying the downtown component of it? To get back to the forty-five?
It's just changing the map, but. It doesn't sound like other people want to, so we can go forward with what the majority feels.
Okay, did you, and did you vote in favor of the last one or?
I don't remember, I remember last time we voted to take off the um, adaptive reuse. But I don't think we closed it because I said, let's keep the hearing open until Carrie gets back.
Right.
Eh, so I don't know if we voted on this.
Did you vote on the reuse?
We voted on the reuse.
But not the full bylaw?
It could have been the full bylaw, I really can't remember, I've had so many things in between now and then.
All of the articles at least once. Three of, uh, three, three of the articles you voted on, four of the articles you voted on twice.
You can never be too sure.
Right.
Um, okay, so then, Millie, you're okay with the seventy-five?
I am okay with the seventy-five.
Okay, um, and I know Bill, he's not on camera, but I think Bill um, is okay.
No, I'm here, they turned off cameras for some reason, I can't turn my camera back on.
Oh.
That was, what, yeah, happening.
That's my issue as well, I can't turn.
Sorry about that, I don't know how to, I don't have the powers. Um, Anthony, your thoughts on that?
I'm, I gotta say, I'm torn on this one. I mean. What if we did, if even went from five to four, just sixty units instead of seventy-five?
Do you think that, Amy, do you think that the people of the town will shoot down the MBTA bylaw because of this?
I know, I'll vote no if it's seventy-five.
Is in April, you would vote no? With the op, possibility that we may see this again in October, is that?
Yes. I probably wouldn't get up and speak out against it, because I'm on the planning board, but I would vote no. I'll vote yes, probably to move it forward, so the town can vote on it, but as an individual. As a planning board member, I will vote no.
I mean, obviously, we want this some, to be something that the town does pass.
I mean, you have to think to yourself, like Anthony, or, but, well, Bill would vote yes, because he said yes, but. If it's seventy-five, you're gonna go to town meeting and actually vote yes, the way.
Yep, I would, a, and here's why, is because the whole point of the MBTA communities is to get housing for people. That's the whole point of this, and if we're gonna try to limit housing, then we're limiting. The spirit of what this law is intended to do in the state.
The spirit of an unfunded mandate.
Either way.
That's, that's.
I mean, we all know that people are having trouble getting housing, right? And that's supply, simple supply and demand, that's why housing rates, apartment rates are going up and they're skyrocketing. Much higher than how much it costs for a mortgage.
Right, and I, but I don't think this will fix it, when the baseball keep, people came forward, I asked. How much they were gonna charge, and they were still gonna charge three thousand dollars for an apartment.
Yeah, because that's the going rate right now.
Right, I don't think this will, people want small, single family homes. The expensive apartments are making people so, that they'll never be able to afford a home, and I don't think that. I think the developers will make money building them, will people be desperate that have to rent them? Is it gonna fix the problem? I, I think the problem is you need more single family homes, you don't need more apartments.
Isn't enough supply for the demand, that is why the price is so high. If there's more supply, then the cost of the housing goes down, there are many people who don't wanna live in single family housing. But most communities in Massachusetts. Require the vast majority of the housing to be single family, they don't allow multifamily, many communities. Don't even allow duplexes. So that is why there is uh, this supply and demand issue. There are more people seeking apartments than there are apartments, and that's what drives up the price. It's basic economics.
I, I think we're also gonna have trouble with, if we have, you know, a hundred and seventy-seven towns that are trying to approve MBTA. And all of a sudden now you have all these lots and acreages that are available to put the density up, I don't think we're gonna have enough builders to do half of the stuff anyways. I think, I really think we're gonna be running to a problems down the road because of these. Eh, you know, some of these mandates that are in place, so, but that's down the road. I, I don't think every single town's gonna be able to come on board and say, okay. Here's our fifty acres, we're gonna build it all at once, it's just not gonna be able to happen.
This, this is not a housing mandate.
Right.
Not requiring you to build a single unit, it's a zoning exercise, that's all this is. And where there is a demand, you know, where there's a desire, where there's developers who are willing to build. Multifamily housing, that's where the housing will go. So it's not, eh, it, it's not necessarily gonna happen in Northborough. Even in the short term or the medium term. So especially with these specific parcels that were chosen, the vast majority of them are. Fully constructed.
Westboro, they picked their three biggest apartment complexes, there's, that's what everybody's gonna do. So it'll be the towns that have the open lots, I mean, I guess Harvey would be one, if, if Harvey was willing to leave. So, I mean, there are a lot of towns that are just putting it on top of. We're not the only ones.
Right, but, but again, I, I, I think that we're gonna get into a situation where nobody's gonna win on any of this, and. Because we're going around some of the. You know, some of the intent of it, um, but I think you gotta compromise somewhere, you can't. You know, if we can meet it halfway, I think we'll be good. We need some, we do need some, some housing in our town, we need it in our downtown. Whether it's forty-five units or seventy-five units over five or ten years. I don't, I don't think that's gonna be, uh, you know, if you, if you don't think people are gonna pass that, then we still have other issues. And that, that's very possible that they won't.
Well, I think there's a big difference between forty-five and seventy-five.
I, I, I don't disagree to some, to some point, but. I don't, you, you know, I think that. So we go to town meeting with this number, and if we don't, if it doesn't pass because of that, we know where we stand.
Um, but Millie, you're still in the court of, eh, the seventy-five is. Regardless, that's, you're in favor of.
Well, that's, that's the maximum, it doesn't mean that they're gonna do it, they could, but it doesn't mean they will.
Yep. Okay, and Anthony, you are, what was your final there?
I, I think I was coming back to before, bring it to sixty.
Oh, sorry, you cut up for me, I don't know if it was my, I think it was my connection, do you mind?
No, it was his.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I was just going back, I, I'm just saying, I think seventy-five is too much, I think um. I wouldn't mind reducing it, let's go to sixty units with four acres, is what I would go with. So I, I still think that's enticing enough to a developer, and it's still gonna bring enough units, you know, towards Main Street.
I'm okay with that, I mean.
Amy, does that bring it closer to what you would be a little better in your mind?
Of course, it's getting closer.
I mean, Laurie, would we really have to rerun for, just for one acre?
Yes, we will, we will. So, eh, maybe we should just wait until like two weeks before town meeting and run it at that point, because. I, I mean, are you guys gonna change your minds again, and I mean, how many times are we gonna vote on these articles, the, every single meeting? The mind is changed, and we're going in a different direction, so.
Why do they start with our stats until the last meeting, as far as I know, so I don't think that's fair to have us make decisions based on uh, data that's not there for us to make decisions on. Amy, you have something there?
I was gonna say that exact same thing, you know, we, we talked about so many, I talked about three a lot, we talked about other things. Um, I don't think it's fair to say we're changing our mind every time, we got the, the results an hour before the last meeting. And then even some wrong information was thrown out, so it's like. It's not fair to keep saying that we're flip flopping. There are towns that have been discussing this and have been having public meetings and public hearings, they've been doing it for longer than we have, so. To point the finger and say that. We're flip flopping, this is a huge decision, and I think it, it took discussion, if we just went into one meeting and said, this is what we're gonna do. Then I don't think we looked at it hard enough, I think, I'm happy that we looked at it.
We were gonna have to have this other meeting anyway, simply because we didn't have the. Um, we didn't have the information up until an hour before last meeting, so it was either gonna happen today or which. You know, was in some ways convenient, because we had an executive session to, to tag on to.
The selectmen are having a meeting tonight, they didn't even have the budget numbers this afternoon, I mean, it's not fair to point fingers.
Um, okay, so it sounds like, I mean, for me, I mean, it's a. I, I. I think it's gonna have a heck of a time passing a town meeting, I'm not sure if it'll squeak by or not, with the majority vote, it may. I, I think, eh, you know, the, I, I guess to Amy, your original point about whether it's about an acre or units, um. I guess the acre doesn't help a whole lot, but the units may. I don't know, I mean, I guess I don't understand why we'd have to pay somebody twelve hundred dollars to subtract an acre, is that my, am I interpreting what you're saying correctly, Laurie? That sounds crazy.
That's how much they charged us to um, add in a couple of parcels. So I'm sure there will be an added fee.
Now we're taken out.
How is it, how is that, just not a math equation?
Because they're already in, they've already been calculated, I would think if we take them out. It shouldn't, I mean, it's worth the ask.
Because they're using the GIS to rerun an analysis, it's not an Excel spreadsheet. They, they are rerunning the analysis and then that number, which includes, let me see. So there's um. District three, so what they're doing is they're coming up with the parcel acreage. The excluded public, excluded non-public, total excluded land, total sensitive land. And then the developable parcel. So that is a GIS exercise.
Okay, do we have to submit this anywhere, this analysis, or? Is that for our own protection to make sure we hit the numbers?
Uh, we have to submit it to the Executive Office of Housing and uh, Livable Communities, so. Should the bylaw pass, so right now, we've, we've gone too long, so we have missed the pre-approval. Uh, process, so we had to submit ninety days in advance of town meeting. So that uh, ship has sailed, so now after town meeting. Um, assuming our bylaw gets approved, then we have to send. Two different places, we have to send to the Attorney General's Office like we normally do. But then we also have to send this analysis that um, Judy Barrett's group is uh, providing. Um, the bylaw itself, the zoning map, and the feasibility study. Uh, that was done by um. Our other consultant, RKG Associates, we have to send that package. Into the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, for them to determine that our bylaw is compliant. So.
Okay, and if we make, if there's a um, uh, amendment on town meeting floor, then what, so that?
That, so everything is gonna go in after town meeting, so we would send in the um. The bylaw as approved at town meeting.
Okay, so if there's an amendment on town floor, we have to rerun the analysis.
Yeah, possibly, if um, if there is a change to the acreage or the parcels, then yes, we would have to rerun the analysis.
Okay, so maybe we should just wait until after town meeting, because even if we pick four now. God only knows what'll happen at town meeting, it could be further amendment, it could be, who knows what, eh, so then we'd have to run it twi- twice, one for ours and one for. Amendment at town meeting.
Figure out how to do it too, because every town should know how to do it, and. Laurie, you said there's four numbers that have to be pulled from the GIS and plugged in there? Because it's not on the GIS where you run it.
So Amy, the worksheet that I emailed to you. So I understand it's uh, that district three, so you see all the various columns?
Yep.
That's coming, that's information that's coming out of the GIS.
Okay, so that num, those numbers come from the GIS and then they plug them into the Excel.
Yeah, so it's coming from the mass GIS.
Yep.
Data, as far as I know.
Okay.
If, if we are to change it to four acres, do we have to specify, wouldn't we have to specify which four acres? Or would they tell us which ones would, would um, accommodate the fifteen units per acre? And then wouldn't they have to run it based on that specific? Area, because it may or may not have undevelopable parcel pieces, areas.
It, it has to be defined before it goes to town meeting, so the map has to show which four acres.
Well, I would think if, if we had five analyzed, and we're just removing one of the five that has already gone through the analysis. It's not like we're gonna be surprised that it's, you know, riverfront protected or whatever else, we've already analyzed it, so a subtraction. Oh, Millie, go ahead, I didn't, maybe I didn't understand your question, Millie.
Yeah, but I wouldn't necessarily assume that it's um. Direct ratio change, because, you know, one of those five acres may only be able to accommodate. You know, seven units, because of their restrictions, another one of those five acres may be able to accommodate twenty-one units. Based on, you know, the entire five acres. So I don't think it's a direct ratio change. Because you don't, one may have more river frontage or wetlands than the other. So I don't think you can just do a, oh, it's twenty percent less, so it's twenty percent less.
I think five acres came off today, right, Laurie, you and Sarah?
Well, like I had said, um, previously, a year ago, Judy Barrett had run the analysis. With five acres. So I just used the numbers from the initial analysis that they had run a year ago. It was a year ago in May.
Oh, so we already had five, why did we even run ten?
Because I thought we would need to add. Some more to the five. So since she was rerunning the analysis anyway, I figured it would be safer to include Harvey. Uh, if we needed to include more. But it turns out we didn't need to include more.
So if there's a problem on town meeting floor and people have a problem with the seventy-five, you just take out all five acres, because we'll be above. And the analysis was run on the five, so it should be able to do an analysis taking all five out. Not that we wanna take all five out, but if you had to. We could, because that analysis was already run, so you could run it by just taking out Harvey.
Remember, this level of detail is not gonna be discussed on town meeting floor. They're not gonna be analyzing the zoning map and being like, hey, you know, I want you to carve out of. You know, this little parcel here versus this little parcel there, it's either they're gonna approve it or they're not.
Or they could say, I don't like the. Or they could say, I don't like the seventy-five acres of Harvey, take out those five acres.
They're not gonna know about seventy-five acres of Harvey unless, unless you mention it. It's just gonna be a zoning map. That's what they're going to see, is they're going to see a zoning map.
You mean seventy-five units?
Parcels that are
Unit.
Part of it. So, you know, you think about, well, we are rezoning to create this highway business southwest district. Nobody is asking, nor are we figuring out what the buildable square footage is of commercial space. That's not typical discussion for a zoning exercise. Because it's all, nobody knows what's gonna happen ultimately, what the buildout is going to be, so when you're zoning lands, you know, we could say, oh, well, you know, we're, right now, the, um, square footage that could be built of industrial spaces, one point five million square feet. Whereas, uh, you know, it could be two million of, uh, commercial square footage. Like, we're not going through that exercise. That's not part of a typical zoning exercise.
Kathy used to do it all the time. When we changed the duplexes, and we had to go through every neighborhood and see what the effect was on all the neighborhoods, and she, we had talked about making another zoning change, and she said it's not to be taken lightly. That we did have to go through the exercise and see what the outcome would be by making the change.
Right, but I don't think this were discussed on town meeting.
No, but you didn't go to town meeting without doing the exercise.
Well, why didn't you wanna do that when we were talking about the highway business southwest? I mean, that wasn't even mentioned.
Because at that, we're going the same. You know, it's, we're not adding housing there. It's one for one. We're going commercial to commercial. We're not talking about units and it was the same uses going from one to the other. It didn't seem like it was gonna be a change.
Well, I do think people are gonna notice the location, regardless of whether they do their own calculations on units or whatnot. I, it'll be clear where it's located, so I think it'll spark questions and discussions and I just think we're just gonna have to be prepared to answer that, or like, or anticipate some sort of amendment. Yeah, sorry, Millie.
To, to be honest, I think what's gonna happen is either people are either not going to want it, no matter what, or they're gonna want it, no matter what. I really don't think they're gonna be looking at, well, you know, why did you choose this one? Why did you choose that? I really don't think they're gonna get to that detail, to be honest. I think David, they've already made up their mind whether they're gonna approve it or not.
Yeah.
I don't disagree.
Okay, then, um, I mean, I guess in my view, if there is possible changes on the floor, then I don't know to what extent we wanna rerun anything. If that's the case, we have to get, pay for each rerun. But it, does anyone feel differently? Or Amy, do you feel differently on that one, or?
No, it's fine. If we can't change it now, then roll the dice.
Anthony, you're the one who brought up four. What do you, what are your thoughts on that?
That's, I mean, that's where I'd prefer to be, but I'm not gonna derail the, the whole board.
Would it be worth it to ask Sarah, you know, can you take off one acre without rerunning everything? Because I don't know if she could. I mean, she's gone through the exercise a couple times now. And if she can, she can, and if she can't, she can't.
I, I like, uh, Carrie's idea about waiting till after town meeting. You know, I, I have limited budget.
Oh, I mean, for free. I mean, ask her if she can take off one acre if it costs money. And if she can, you know, do it for free, but if it costs money, then I wouldn't do it.
Again, I don't think anyone is gonna care, one way, one acre, one way or the other. Either they're not gonna vote for this because Milton didn't, or they're gonna vote for it. I really don't see anyone changing their minds because of one acre.
So it's just gonna be the fifteen units, so that may be like, people, people really be like, oh, well, now that you're gonna reduce by fifteen, let's go for it. Maybe that is a valid.
But when you're talking about nine hundred, is that really a?
Are they gonna?
Fifteen is not gonna make that much of a difference. When you're talking about, you know, sixty acres, right, one acre, or what, maybe a percent and a half of what we're actually talking about, isn't gonna make much of a difference.
I just think that's like the main developable area, so I think that would be the one. I don't know. I know before town meeting, on my planning board page, I always advertised I was gonna go and list the warrant. I'd probably talk about MBTA. So I was gonna list out, you know, these are the sites, this is how many units.
And that, that's fine. I think people can have that information.
Yeah.
They should. They'll probably ask questions.
Yeah.
Just so people know what's going on. I don't want anyone to feel like they were tricked.
Right, right. I wouldn't want that either. Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we will go as is and then see what happens in terms of reaction, and most likely to Bill's point, people are either already, if they know about this at all, they've already made up their mind, and if they don't, I don't know. I guess we'll just answer the questions as they come in. Yep. All right, anything else on this one then? Okay, so are there any, um, other, I guess everything else is settled. That was the last of the bunch to settle?
Do we meet before town meeting? I'd leave it open, because I might be able to figure out the formula if anyone's ready, and if anybody wants to go to four.
Remember, I'm working with, uh, GIS right now on the final map, so now it's, it's now or never, because I have to finalize those maps, and then we'll have to make a couple of hundred copies for distribution at town meeting.
So Amy, do you have something? Do you wanna speak now, or forever hold your peace on this one?
Uh, no, I'm gonna try, I'll try to figure it out anyways, but if, if we won't have time, but you know, in the past, we've stayed open until the night of town meeting, and there have been discussions in the room the night before town meeting, so.
All right, well, there's no argument, even the hearing open. Um, in case anything comes into light, uh, we have our next, we have the April second and the sixteenth, actually. Is that correct for April? So we have a couple more meetings in April.
Yes, so April second, it will be the, uh, petition article town meeting, and April sixteenth will be the fire station.
All right, so then do we wanna motion to continue the hearing to April second at six? Are we starting at six? Okay.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Um, let's see here. I don't see anything else of note on the agenda. It looks like, um, next planning board meetings, like we just said, April second, April sixteenth, next Z B A, the March twenty-sixth, and M P I C is April eighteenth. Is there anything else? Any other business, subcommittee updates? Well, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, how good night. Thanks, everybody.